All right. Good evening and everyone, welcome to the San Carlos City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any from my fellow council members? Is there any report from closed session?
There are no reportable actions from closed session.
All right. Next, we've got a couple of presentations. We're now going to have a presentation from the Sierra Club on a Guide for Master Planning, presented by our own David Krab. Hello, David.
Hello, all. All right. Good evening to Mayor Collins and members of the council. Let's see, I've got to get my slides first here. I'm not used to doing presentations, sorry. Let's see, okay. Tonight's presentation we put together by the Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Committee, and we consider it a guide for making cities more sustainable by including green infrastructure and creating and enhancing connections between our natural, green spaces, our wildlife, and our residents. I thought it would be good to present it tonight because it kind of connects with the city's current work on the pedestrian bicycle master plan, which involves our streets, and a lot of this presentation you'll see does involve streets. But what we want to do is expand the bicycle master plan, thinking to include not only corridors for cars, pedestrians, and bikes, but also as wildlife corridors that support beneficial birds and insects in our neighborhoods. A guide would start typically with the city creating a GIS map of the city, and then you locate, well, we'll start it off here with the slideshow. Let's see, okay. And once you have your GIS map, you start locating existing parks and creeks and open spaces, the baylands, and even schools. So you have points of reference within the map. Then we identify, well, let me go back for a second. First, you locate where your parks are. Whoops, oh, I just killed it. All right. There we go. I keep killing it. What am I doing wrong, Crystal? There we go. Okay. Once we've got the parks located, we want to identify where parks which are not within a half-mile walk to a park. And the reason for that is, I gave you a handout, which was not part of the slideshow, about this 10-minute walk initiative, which has been put together by the National Recreation and Park Association. And their thinking is that there should be a great park within a 10-minute walk of every person in every neighborhood in every city across America. And a half-mile radius is about a 10-minute walk from every neighborhood. So we try to find out, first I should explain, this map is City of San Mateo. We would obviously do one for the City of San Carlos if you're working here. But you try to find out where the parks are not, and if there are, in fact, neighbors or people around there, start thinking about maybe creating additional park in that area, pocket park or something, so that people will be able to connect to it. Next, well, here it is. We create new parks in those particular areas. Next, we do, and we add landscape pedestrian walks and bikeways connecting the parks, the creeks and the bay. And also to step back for a second, once we've located the parks, we also are locating the schools, so these connectors are also connecting parks and schools throughout the Then, once we decided where our areas of corridors are going to be connecting all the various parts of the city, we decide, we see what areas need tree cover to shade the walks and the bikeways. Now, San Carlos is very fortunate, we have a lot of trees, and so we may not have to do this quite as much, we might have to in other cities. But there are still, I'm sure, sections that would be good to have additional trees and landscaping in those sections along with the bikeways, so it kind of makes the area for the bikes and the walkers much more pleasant area, as well as having environmental issues helps. I did it again. What do I keep doing here? Okay. All right. Then we wanted to integrate the natural trees and landscape pedestrian walkways and bikeways with the Green Street Stormwater System. Now, City of San Carlos, and in fact, all the cities in the state are required to do a green infrastructure issue now, and San Carlos has started doing it, and I've seen some examples of it. But it's not, we were working in sort of in silos. We do, we do the Green Streets here, and we do the bikes and, you know, pedestrians over here, we do the nature over there, and I'm not seeing an integration of it all. And what this whole slideshow is about is trying to integrate all these things into one, so that once you're dealing with one particular section of the city or a plan of the city, you can then use the different disciplines in the city, different departments and so on can come together and work, so Parks and Rec can work with Parks, with the Public Works Department to get, you know, like, nature on the streets, connecting things Then, once we get the trees and so on in there, we try to see if we can work with our public utilities to underground the public utilities where they might cause us a problem, because we already know we want to do that because of fire safety in the city. And also, if you're going to plant trees, if you have overhead lines, it doesn't work, you've got to, you've got to kind of work around that. And then, of course, we want to use appropriate planting, and most of the plants we'd like to suggest would be native plants, but there are other plants that will work as well. The idea is to get plants that are actually, will support a lot of, like, birds and bees and butterflies and that type of thing. I've been told one time that a single oak tree will support like 100 species, different species in that tree, and other types of trees don't do as well, so we want to, we want to get nature into the whole thing. This is just a repeat of what I just told you. I'm going through this, I keep doing that, I'm not sure why I do it. Okay. And let's see, okay. Okay. I want to kind of explain Green Streets to people who are watching on television. Green Streets are designed to, with the landscape, to capture the natural drainage that come off of our streets. We now, you know, most of the time, that drainage goes into our storm drains, which then goes into the ocean, and you've seen the signs, drains the ocean, don't put oil in this, so on. And so the idea is to get the drainage to go into natural vegetation and so on. And that works well, because it only solves the vegetation, the drainage problem, but it also allows us to get our native species that have corridors that they can, you know, plants that they can go along and connect with. Just a section, what Green Streets do, they provide natural habitat corridors and linkages to sustain populations of pollinators and other species, provide access to nature for residents, increase the number of desirable species of trees to support biodiversity, minimize pollution, et cetera, green, yeah, stream degradation and localized flooding, bio retention, mitigate local air quality, make biking, walking, public transit safer and more pleasant, and educate people about environmental, about the environment and sustainability, because they're built where people live. The streets are right in front of you, if they're environmentally, you're connected to them. And they make good economic sense by reducing the underground public infrastructure. The rest of the thing, I'm going to go through real fast. These are examples that came out of the San Mateo County Sustainable Green Streets and Parking Lots Guide Line. I selected the ones that have bicycle lanes or bicycle facilities on them. And you can see there, you've got a native swale, and then you've got a bicycle lane next to it and a sidewalk, and I'll swing through them really, I did it again, sorry. One here I want to show you that's kind of our ideal. This would be our ideal, if we could have our way on every street in San Carlos. We would have trees, we'd have a natural swale for the drainage, we'd have a list, a section of trees, we'd have a bicycle lane separated from traffic, and we'd have a pedestrian walkway separated from the bicycle lane. I'll just go through these quickly. This is an example of Palo Alto, they did what they call a pollinator map. We sometimes call these pollinator pathways for the trees. And so that would be the beginning, when I started off the slideshow about connecting your links. And a lot of this information came from a booklet called Making Nature City, and there's a link there about if you want to go to it, it's about 25, 30 pages long, a lot more than what I'm telling you tonight about how to bring nature back into our cities. And I did it again, sorry. Okay, well, that's the end of the slideshow, anyway. And, but one thing I wanted to also just wrap up with is, we also, there is a symposium, a Green Street Symposium is coming up, and it combines, we call Complete Streets, I'm sure you're familiar with it, but maybe the people listening aren't. Complete Streets are streets that are designed so that they're safe for pedestrians, bicyclists, transit, and automobiles, not just automobiles. So we're trying to make it safe for everybody and encourage everybody to use the streets. That's a complete street. Green Street, so what I just explained to you about the drainage system, and it's going to bring that all together, and what we're going to call it is Sustainable Streets. We get everything in there, nature and everything, Clement Streets, and so on. And it's going to be February 13th, Mountain View Community Center, 9:00 AM to 3:30, so it's a full-day thing, and it's co-sponsored by a whole bunch of good organizations, including several cities, Mountain View, Santa Clara. It's got CCAGs in there, and so it's in the packet that I handed out to you. If you're interested, I'd appreciate that. The other last thing I'd like to say is, I would like to have, what I'd like, the action of the council tonight, or at least thinking of the council tonight, is to, I got the impression that the Bike Master Plan is kind of working in a silo, which typically happens in all of our cities, you know, we, each department kind of gets something, and they kind of do their thing, and we don't see a lot of coordination with other things, and I'm not seeing a lot of coordination with greenery or other issues that we talked about tonight. And I approached them at one time, Public Works, and asked if I could meet with them, and also maybe the Parks and Recreation people, and they said, no, we're not interested in talking to you. I would like you to reach out to your staff and say, maybe it'd be a good idea to start talking to some other folks and try to bring something together, so when we were actually spending all this money out there on our streets, we can actually do multiple things instead of just one thing at a time, you know, pave the streets today and put sidewalks in tomorrow, and got a bike lane in next week, and put some planting in the week after. Let's do it all at once. But it needs the staff to, you know, start thinking holistically. So that's my ask of the council, and thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, David. I do see a light on. Mark, did you have a question for David?
Actually, I had one, a couple of questions for David, and a question I think that's probably for staff. So let me do the David questions first, so you can, you can sit down. Nice presentation, by the way. The, as I was listening to you, one question I had was, in other cities where perhaps this type of work has been, they're a little further along than we are, regarding the, encouraging the use of trees and planter strips and whatnot, how do they, how have they been successful in getting buy-in from the property owners? Because my understanding is, most communities do like we do, where that's, the planter strip is actually public property, but, but the trees there are planted and maintained by the property owner who's adjacent to it, it's not usually maintained by the city.
That's a good question. I don't have a good answer for you. One of the reasons I don't have a good answer for you is, none of the cities are doing this yet. Sierra Club has just started this thing, we're just starting outreach, this is, we've told, the only city we've talked to so far is Mountain View, and Mountain View was really excited about it. They actually are going to actually participate in this symposium coming up. And so we have to figure out, basically, how to do that. And that actually brings me back to something I was not in the slideshow, and I meant to mention. The last step, after you've got your green corridors, your trees and so on in there, the last step to make sure that it's attractive to insects and birds and so on, is to talk to the adjacent property owners and try to talk to them about making, doing the landscaping on their property consistent with what the city is doing in terms of natural plants. So we get rid of all these lawns and start thinking in terms of what, you've seen it more and more all around the city, you know, more and more. So that's kind of a step that wasn't in the slideshow, but, you know, and so, and maybe by doing that, we'll get them, I don't know, and I would say, I would say, provide incentives for them to do that, would be my suggestion.
It probably comes, I mean, it's an intersection of private and public interests, which is a traditionally tricky one.
It is, yes.
The other thing I was going to say, I sort of have a question for staff, but the other comment I was going to make to you, David, is, I certainly have no problem with and encouraging, giving you and other people an opportunity to talk to the commissions, the appropriate commissions, Parks and Rec or what have you, about your ideas. I'd also, I'd also, you know, just as a reminder, I've shared this with other people, too, there's nothing that prevents you from going and making public comment, and, and meeting with people individually, and as you and I have talked about over the years, a lot of times that offline lobbying is actually a lot more effective than, than, than the more formal approach.
Well, I mean, it was trying to be, it started off as trying to be an informal meeting with staff and not bring it to the public, you know, but
That's fine.
It didn't fly, so that's why I'm here.
Just providing some feedback. Thank you. The question, others may have questions, the question I had for staff, just in, if anybody has some sense, is, I was curious about what the, rough speaking, differential cost impact of Green Street-type technology is, because I imagine it's somewhat more expensive, but I honestly don't know. That's probably a Stephen question.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council member, Stephen Machidir, Public Works Director. In regards to your question, certainly, the Green Streets, you know, it is a concept, and certainly that's something that the City of San Carlos and, you know, my staff is looking into. As this gentleman indicated, it is something that, you know, the Regional Board wants us, or all cities for that matter, to really investigate and actually treat the water, the stormwater as it comes off the street, to treat it, you know, prior to going in the storm drain. The additional cost certainly is going to be a little bit more, I think it's just kind of developing some of the criteria and procedures and how to kind of locate some of these improvements. As the city council is well aware, we have a lot of kind of narrower, narrower, narrower streets, and therefore, we don't have the kind of right of ways that we can take a lot of area that we could use for stormwater treatment. However, you know, we do look at opportunities, whenever there's a, perhaps a different street, or if they're, we're going to reconfigure a street, we look for opportunities. Just kind of the recent project that, you know, that the council has awarded, the San Carlos Avenue Pedestrian Project, that does have some green infrastructure features that are going to be included in the design and construction.
Thank you, Stephen. I'm glad to hear that we're considering it as, as we go through our normal, normal process. That's good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Mr. Krabey, thank you so much for your presentation, really appreciate it. The holistic view, I certainly appreciate. You talked a little bit about the fact that your observation is that the city is approaching some of these issues in a very disjointed fashion. Could you talk a little bit more about that and what specific actions you would like the city to take in order to rectify that to your satisfaction?
Okay. First, it's not just San Carlos, every city thinks this way. And it's just the nature, because, it's the way we've been taught to think, we break things down into pieces, you know, the way, Western civilization has grown, is you deal with a problem piece by piece, we don't think holistically, and of course, you know, that's what the idea is, holistically. But in this case, I would think that certainly a close collaboration between Public Works, who is, you know, basically concerned with the, most of the information on the, you know, the streets and the bicycle pedestrian study, should be working more closely, or maybe they are, with Parks and Recreation in terms of the types of plants to go there and where plants can go, and maybe there's some money in Parks and Recreation that can help some of this work, both as a landscaping thing as well as a remediation for drainage in the streets. That's the type of thing I'm thinking about. And there's also, in this thing, there was the private people, too, if we do think about undergrounding utilities, you've got to do PG&E, or, you know, we've got to get them in the ball. So the idea of just thinking outside, I say the silo, outside your department, outside your site, your specific assignment, and we all do it. I mean, I'm not specifically criticizing San Carlos or even, you know, the staff here, it's the way we all think, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, David. Very informative presentation, and I appreciate your coming to speak for us.
Well, thank you for listening.
Okay. Next, we're going to have a presentation from Sam Trans on Reimagine Sam Trans.
What's the speaker for that item?
What's that?
Do you have a speaker?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it said not on, on the agenda, I apologize. Bernard Votary? Come on up, Bernard. I apologize for overlooking you, I saw one too many boxes checked.
Thank you very much. I'm a resident of San Carlos on Melundy Drive, and many of the things that have been suggested have been of concern to me, and also from the Sierra Club, I'm a member of the Sierra Club as well. And one of them has to do with safe passage. This is supposed to be the city of good living, and yet, there's tremendous amount of danger to pedestrians in particular, and animals especially. On Melundy Drive, where I've lived for the past 50 years, we had herds of deer that would cross, you'd get 14 deer trying to cross Melundy. In my property, there are deer, foxes, bobcats, coyotes, mountain lions, and for them to pass across the street is becoming increasingly impossible, because nobody controls the speed limit. The speed limit is posted for 25 miles per hour, and nobody goes 25 miles an hour. When I drive down 25 miles per hour, you have an entire queue of cars behind me trying to run over me. And the average speed, I would estimate, and it'd be nice if the traffic people would assess this, has got to be at least 35 miles per hour. On Crestview Drive, which is posted for 30 miles an hour, nobody drives 30 miles per hour, they're driving much faster. Now imagine this, here you have a doe with two fawns that is trying to cross these streets, they don't stand a chance. And what's going to happen is that will be an impact between animals and vehicles, and the animals will either be killed, or the driver will be distracted, try to avoid them, have an accident, and this whole disaster is rapidly increasing. So we used to have Redwood City Police Department, and they would patrol the flow of traffic, and they don't, we have the sheriff, they're never there, they park a car there, nobody gives any citations, and, and so now we have children walking to school, hopefully, instead of driving in cars, and people are driving at an incredibly fast pace, and so now we have does with fawns, and we have mothers with children, and we have the making of a disaster. And so I support this entire proposal of, and I would even suggest that we have speed bumps on Melundy Drive if we can't have the police moderate the driving. And not only that, people do not stop for, when people are trying to cross the street. And now, look at, I'm just going to be brief, because I know you've got other business, but Alameda de las Polgas is also the making of a disaster, because you are planning to add 64 homes in the first phase, and then another 64 homes, 120 homes. There will be at least two cars per home, and they will be trying to enter Alameda. And, and those children are trying to go to school, and the cyclists are on the road, and how are these 120 to 250 cars going to be able to enter the street without running over somebody? So I think you need to give urgent attention to how you're going to improve along the lines that have been suggested of separating walkers, bikers, and cars, and Alameda de las Polgas would be a wonderful opportunity
Sorry, Dr. Hutter, if you just wrap it up, thanks.
Would be a wonderful opportunity to do a demonstration project on how you can improve and make life safer in San Carlos. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other speaker cards on this, is there anyone else who would like to speak? And I see Sonia coming up, so.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to say, in response to the speeding, I hope to work with Jerry Hill, Kevin Mullen, David Chu, trying to re-attempt to legalize speed cameras in California, because I think that it would be a very effective, cost-effective way to reduce speeds. I would suggest $10 per mile per hour, over, whatever you need to keep a credit card on file with the DMV, anything under 5 miles per hour, over, does not get reported. I'll talk about how we spend it when we talk about Sam Trans. But meanwhile, the second thing I wanted to say is, in response to David Krab's excellent presentation, which I wholeheartedly support, is the, I have been trying for months to try to get a satellite image of our town and our surrounding towns from Google Maps at the resolution you get at the most, the highest resolution, at the size you get of the highest size. the highest size. I would love to see in our library, in our town hall, somewhere right maybe on that wall, our entire town, in not, not by parcel and the lines, but even the maps you had. I'd like to see the satellite image where you can see each tree. And I don't know if we have, we're in Silicon Valley. I hope somebody here can pull some strings, because I have not found a way to download image. I would be cutting and pasting. It would be crazy. So anyway, if you can find a way to put a community map so we can see where our deficits are, where our connecting points need to be, it would be fantastic to have an overview, a satellite image for that purpose and all the other purposes, just finding your way around town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. All right. Do we have any more speakers on this item? Young man, did you want to come up and say something on this item? Okay. I don't see any other speaker cards. All right. I think we'll move on now to item 5B. This is a presentation from Sam Trans on Reimagine Sam Trans.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Millie Tallison. I'm a principal planner at Sam Trans, and I'm also the deputy project manager of Reimagine Sam Trans. And I'm happy to be here this evening to give everyone a quick overview of Reimagine Sam Trans, our project that we're engaging in right now. I will go over our project goals, our timeline, as well as three of the tasks that we're working on right now, including existing conditions, or what we're calling state of Sam Trans, market research, and public outreach. So what is Reimagine Sam Trans? Reimagine Sam Trans is a comprehensive operational analysis, as it's known in sort of the transit planning world. So it's an in-depth study of our transit network to identify areas of improvement. And the last one that Sam Trans did was actually in around 2012, 2013. So we're excited to really sort of look into what have been the changes in San Mateo County in transportation since, since about eight years ago, which is significant. So overall, Reimagine Sam Trans will result in a redesigned bus network in 2021. And how redesigned it is, how different it is than what it is today, is yet to be determined. So why are we doing this project? As I mentioned, there have been significant changes in the last five to eight years in terms of the mobility options that exist for people. I think there's more choices than ever when it comes to how to get around. And so we need to sort of take stock of the different travel patterns that are going on in our county and how we might need to adjust our bus network and our other mobility options to really reflect the changing travel patterns. And many transit agencies are actually doing COAs right now. They're doing them to help identify really the opportunities to better provide service. And Sam Trans is certainly not immune to challenges that are facing a lot of transit agencies, such as declining ridership, ridership, excuse me. But we are really uniquely positioned because of Measure W to really think creatively about how to enter, you know, the next decade and how to really kind of beef up service and improve, improve the experience that people have using Sam Trans. So we have three goals. The first, although they're not in any particular order, but the first one listed is to really improve the experience for our existing customers. Second is to grow new and more frequent ridership on Sam Trans. And third is to build our efficiency and our effectiveness as a mobility provider. So this is our project timeline. It's an 18-month project. We are now in winter 2019. So we are finishing up our state of Sam Trans analysis. We did our first round of public outreach in the fall, and we also did market research in the fall. So we are just nearing the point where we're going to be designing service guidelines. And these are things that kind of help us determine how we allocate our resources, and also how we make decisions about how to design transit routes. And also, how do we measure our success, I think is a really big part of that as well. So looking ahead, our Sam Trans Board of Directors will be adopting that service policy framework in the spring. And then we will jump headfirst into really designing some service alternatives. And that will be likely three different Sam Trans bus networks, likely ranging from, you know, kind of minor tweaks, up to potentially completely different service delivery models, such as microtransit is something that we are actually piloting in Pacifica right now, and we're monitoring the results of that really closely to see how it might have applicability around the rest of the county. So three potential bus, new bus networks in the spring. We will take those out for another round of public outreach and input in early summer, late spring. And then we will develop what we sort of call our final alternative, or our sort of preferred new bus network. That will go out for another round of final public outreach in the fall, and then we'll really get into planning for implementation, like I mentioned, in 2021. So a couple times now, I've mentioned the three components of our first phase, all leading up to our service policy framework. And briefly, what is sort of our existing route network for Sam Trans? We have some high numbers, high-level numbers here. We provide nearly 7 million miles of passenger bus service per year, serve more than 35,000 passenger boardings every weekday, and we currently operate 70 fixed routes and one on-demand route, that's the microtransit route that I mentioned up in Pacifica. This is a two-piece map of our existing route network. We have routes that serve all kinds of purposes. We have routes that connect to BART and Caltrain. We have routes that are school-related routes. We have routes that go beyond the county lines and go into Palo Alto and go into, north into San Francisco. And we have our mainline route, which is our ECR route, that is really our, the spine of our network. It goes up and down El Camino Real and generates about a quarter of our daily boardings. So one of the things that we did as part of our state of the system, existing conditions analysis, is we did a transit likelihood analysis. And this map, it's definitely like 30,000-foot level, but it shows the areas in a darker green color that are traditionally, historically, more likely to generate transit ridership. And that's based on a few factors. Vehicle ownership, specifically zero-car households are, as you can imagine, more likely to use transit. Household income, lower-income households, traditionally more likely to use transit. Ethnicity, minority populations are typically more likely to use transit. Age, seniors and youth. And then population density is a very important factor as well. We need people to potentially use transit. And as you can see on the map, North County, East Palo Alto, and the El Camino Real corridor are the strongest for transit likelihood among residents in San Mateo County. And that certainly won't be the only way that we're going to think about how to design bus service, but that's, that's one of the ways that we're thinking about it. This map shows average weekday boardings by stop. Strongest ridership occurs in North County right now, although there are opportunities and currently key or large stops by, for boardings in South County at key transfer points. So I think Redwood City, Caltrain, Palo Alto Transit Center are also key in addition to daily city BART, Colma BART, and San Bruno BART. So another thing that we're looking into is transfers, and that's really important as we think about the bus system as a network. And so one thing that we're finding is that nearly half of our riders transfer to another bus to complete their trip. And just looking at the top bar, which is the ECR route, we can see that a really significant number of riders are transferring to another Sam Trans bus, also transferring to BART, Muni, Caltrain. There's a lot of different transferring that's happening. And we are excited that just about a week and a half ago, we started offering free transfers on Sam Trans, which hadn't been offered before. So with the app, with our app and with a Clipper card, you can now get a free transfer within two hours. So market research. So this had two parts to it. We did a countywide transportation survey, and the goal of that was to understand the overall transportation preferences and habits of San Mateo County residents. And this included riders and non-riders of Sam Trans. And really trying to get at what was the willing, what is the willingness to try transit or other modes of transportation? And what are the current experiences or sort of brand awareness of Sam Trans? And this survey was a statistically significant survey, so the respondents, our market research firm made sure that the overall response rate really reflects the county's demographics in terms of getting enough responses from different income levels, different geographies, all throughout the county, to really reflect the county itself. We also did three focus groups, one with English-speaking riders, one with English-speaking non-riders, and one with Spanish-speaking riders and non-riders combined. And just a few things that we're learning, we're still going through the data as a whole, but a few things that we noticed is that real-time information, people's desire for real-time information is really coming, coming up to, rising up to the top as something that both riders and non-riders are really interested in Sam Trans prioritizing. People are also looking for us to work on our connections, regional transit, and also ways to speed up the bus to make trips on transit faster is something that we were hearing about a lot. Okay. So third and finally is our public outreach efforts. So we did, I believe, 54, I'm looking at Amy, I think we did 54 events in the month of November, trickling a little bit into December. So we had staff all over the place, which was really fun to get out and really engage with our riders and with the community. We were at bus stops, we were at transit hubs, we were at community events, and we also did a number of presentations to community-based organizations. And we did a virtual town hall, which folks can watch as, as many times as they want, on YouTube at our website, reimagine samtrans.com. And bus operator outreach is also a really important part of this. We want to make sure that we're hearing from them about their experience driving Sam Trans routes right now and what they're hearing, because they're really sort of the, you know, we were out there a ton in the month of November, but they're out there all the time, and they're hearing directly from our riders about what's working and not, what's not working. And finally, we, we do have a community survey, which anyone can take, that is closing in just two days. So if anyone wants to take it, please take it before the 15th, and that's available at reimagine samtrans.com. So transit planning is all about trade-offs. So one of the things we've been doing is really trying to get people's input on, of, you know, the different ways that we could invest and the different things we could think about trying and doing differently, what is most important. So while we were out in the community, we actually did a dot exercise on a board, and we gave people four dots, and we asked them to prioritize their top four choices for these 10 ideas. These are five, and then I'm going to show the other five. But things we're, we're really asking people to think about are more frequent service, earlier bus service, earlier in the morning, later bus service in the evening, more midday bus service, weekend service, service to new areas, faster routes with fewer stops, regional transit, bus shelters, and again, improved real-time information. And as I mentioned, some things that are really rising to the top are the improved real-time information, faster routes with fewer stops, time transfers to regional transit, and then I think people always ask for more frequent, more frequent bus service. So just a little plug, this is definitely, if you have feedback on Sam Trans bus service, if you have ideas, now is really the time to talk to us. These studies, like I mentioned, only get done typically every 10 or 15 years. So this is a really exciting time, I think, for Sam Trans to think about how to, how to change and how to grow into the next decade. So take our survey by the 15th. You can comment anytime on our website, reimagine samtrans.com, or you can email us. And I think I sort of already went, went through this. We have a lot of work still coming up, a couple more rounds of public outreach and engagement, where we'll be back out in the community. And I think I'll just wrap up there. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we do have a technical advisory committee where we're inviting all of the cities, city staff to participate. And so I believe we do have someone from the city of San Carlos on our invitation list, and I would just encourage staff to participate in that, to really stay in the loop throughout the whole project on our progress.
Great. Thank you, Millie. We've got one council member that would like to ask you a question. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice presentation. Thank you. In listening to it, and this question, if it ends up being too open, and feel free to defer it, we can just talk offline or something. I've always been kind of curious about how does Sam Trans conceptualize its customer set? Customer set in terms of beneficiaries? Who are the people that you're serving? Just curious if, if there's something that you can rattle off, because everybody knows that.
I think, so I think that most, some different people would answer that question differently, I think, which is interesting. I mean, I think we are here to serve the entire community. We are trying to maximize, to the extent we can. It's definitely a trade-off, as I mentioned. We want to serve the most people that we can. So to the extent there are people who are transit-dependent, I think we want to make sure that we're providing service to those folks. We also want to, and right now, we provide actually a significant amount of service in North County because it does generate a lot of ridership up there. So it's definitely a balance in terms of making sure that we're providing enough coverage, that people who are transit-dependent or who do want to try transit have an option, but also that we're putting the resources in the places that maybe there is the most transit likelihood, like that map showed. But I think the service policy framework that I mentioned, that we're going to be developing over the next couple of months and bringing to our board, I think will actually probably start to outline some of that, some of your question around how we, what is our role in the community, and how do we translate that role into how we allocate our resources? So I think that'll be an interesting exercise coming up.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Adam?
Thank you for the presentation. I had two questions that are related. So one, how, as you incorporate this, how are you looking at sort of the commercial growth or the job growth that's going to happen in certain areas? So we've got an area of town that's likely to have some significant commercial growth over the next 10 years, that may right now not need a route or may need, not need the frequency. So how do you capture that within your, your scope and your service?
Yeah. So we have a couple, we have a lot of maps that we're generating or that our consultant team is generating, one of which is very much near-term population, residential and employment growth or upcoming development, just in the next couple of years, because, as I mentioned, this is fairly near-term. We're looking to implement in 2021. But we also have some maps that we're kind of keeping, you know, on the back burner a little bit, and keeping in our mind about where larger developments might be happening in five or 10 years. And I think most planning efforts have a sort of for future consideration chapter to them, and I think this one will be no different in terms of identifying where we might need to make a change or reevaluate making a change, you know, in five to 10 years.
And then just sort of a follow-up to that, because I don't know the answer to that. Do you have any sort of public-private partnerships around routes? I could imagine that some employers might say, well, we're willing to fund certain parts of a Sam Trans route because it's less costly for them, but they're willing to pay for certain parts of it. Is that something that you guys do now or that you would entertain in the future?
That's not something we do now. I think it's something we can definitely keep in mind. I know VTA is starting to do a lot of that. I know VTA is starting to do a lot of that with their express routes. But I think, yeah, it's definitely something we can, we can keep in mind for this process.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Sarah?
Thank you, Ron. I also want to thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that you're here tonight. I know that we have some community members in the audience who are interested in transit, so, and more watching at home, so thank you. I have two questions. Number one, it was brought to my attention that in the early 2000s and then in 2009, several bus routes were cut. And I'm wondering if Samtrans is going back and looking at those old routes to see what could potentially be revitalized?
Yes, we do have some people on our team, luckily, who are really familiar with some of our older routes, and they are bringing those to our attention. The other thing that's interesting is our, a lot of our bus operators are bringing a lot of those routes back to our attention. So I think, yes, that is, that is part of it.
Part of the process, great to hear. And then I was, I was looking at your map, and I know that San Carlos is small, and we're not necessarily this massive transit hub, but I just want to make sure that, you know, I appreciated your comments about being very cognizant about working in the community. And here in San Carlos, we have a lot of schoolchildren who ride the bus. And it's, we have an area of schools in our town where there's four schools, and it's extremely crowded, and it's very difficult for parents to get up to, it's an elementary, middle school, and a high school, all kind of combined into one area, and it's very congested. So I want to thank Samtrans for stepping up and providing that route, and I hope that it continues and that we can really work with our community members who are using that route. And then I've also heard on the other scale of time that from our seniors in the hills, that they would really like to see more bus routes where they could take the bus down to downtown or to our adult community center. So I'm hoping that these kind of intangible elements can be, hopefully, continue to be thought about as you move forward in the planning process. Okay, thank you.
All right, and Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins, and thank you for your presentation. My colleagues asked a number of questions that I had, so I'll get to some of the other ones that I was thinking about. So you talked about a, Samtrans has an on-demand pilot underway in a small community. I think that may be interesting, if that is successful for us to look at with some of the areas that Sarah just mentioned. The other thing I was wondering about is that when I see Samtrans, I see these large-format buses, and it always breaks my heart, because they always seem relatively empty. So is Samtrans looking at any type of difference in, forgive the phrase, but product mix in terms of the types of different vehicles that it might operate, and be a little bit more flexible in kind of how it configures service on some of these routes?
Yeah, so fleet right sizing is kind of a term that we use, which will be one of the later tasks of this work, to see what is the new preferred network and what might we need to think about doing to our fleet to, to meet the needs of that network. And so, yes, that is part of it. The other thing I'll just say is, operationally, I have heard that sometimes there are these kind of odd, you know, you'll see like an articulated bus running around, and you're like, why is that running around up here? And sometimes it's, it's purely like an operational need of not having time for a driver to get back to a garage to switch out a bus before it needs to get to a school, to meet, you know, a school bell time. So sometimes there are these kind of operational things that allow us to provide more service than we otherwise would if we stuck to a really specific-sized bus. But yes, part of this project is going to be looking at how we might need to right-size or change out some of our fleet to meet the needs of a future network.
And then just real quickly, with respect to, kind of touching on what Adam said a little bit earlier, so there's a lot of companies that have incredible job growth, and they have their own transportation services. In addition, Caltrain is modifying their plan and expanding their service. So, you know, with, with respect to that, are you taking all of those elements into consideration as well?
Yes, absolutely. And actually, Samtrans is, my colleague is actually just starting a shuttle study that is separate, but is going to be, we're definitely trying to keep these studies talking to each other, because there are a lot of, there's a lot of connections to large employers right now that are met through shuttles. And so we want to really take into consideration, like, when is that the best thing, and when could Samtrans possibly step in and provide, provide a service? So that is also being thought about through a separate but related study.
Great, thank you.
All right. Jeff, I think you wanted, if something you wanted to weigh in on?
If you don't mind. I was actually on the Steering Committee eight years ago, so I'm pretty familiar with how complicated the job and what an enormous task this is. So it's a very impressive process you have laid out. One of the things that I would have liked to have seen eight years ago, and I would very much like to see now, is a financial analysis of where the tax funds are coming from countywide, so that we have an understanding of what our community is, is committing and paying for Samtrans service relative to the services that we receive.
Great, all right. And, well, the only thing I'd like to say, first of all, thank you, great presentation. I am always continually impressed by the depth of knowledge and the focus on all the details that go into running Samtrans. This is a group of incredibly dedicated people, and in the one year that I've been on the board, it never ceases to amaze me how much you, all of you, sort of keep looking at the future and are always looking at ways to improve the bus service. I went to a conference in, or was it in Jacksonville last summer, and it was, it was put on by the American Public Transportation Association, and I discovered that just about every public transportation company in the country has the same problems that Samtrans has. But the hard work that you, that you all do is, doesn't go unnoticed, and I'm just continually impressed. Mark, you wanted to make some last comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had sort of a follow-on comment to Jeff's question or comment, and it was related to the question I had asked you about, you know, what's the clientele that's being served? I hope that as this process unfolds, that one of the things that, that will get weighed into it is, there are communities, and I suspect San Carlos is one of them, that's a relatively small consumer of transit, might be a higher consumer of transit if there were more transit options that fit the needs of the community better. But related to all of that, whether, and independent of whether that, I should say, that could be, those needs can be met, I suspect it's probably also going to play, it's one of the communities that will play a bigger and bigger role in providing the funding for whatever it is that Samtrans is going to be able to do. And I just hope that the political reality of making sure that, that the folks who are helping to grease the wheels to make things work, actually, some of their needs get met too. Because that's, otherwise, we can end up in a situation where, you know, eventually the local support for things like mass transit will start declining, because people go, well, I'm just, I'm paying higher taxes for it, and I'm not seeing anything for it. And there's all sorts of different kinds of seeing. There's, you know, I always try to remind constituents who make those arguments to me, even today, that every time you guys take a car off the road, that's a benefit to them, even if they never set foot in a bus. But unless you remind people of that, and unless you're really giving them something else to think about, they're going to miss that, and then you guys are going to have a problem. So, thanks.
Definitely encourage San Carlos residents to take our survey over the next two days and put in your zip code, so we'll be able to see, we can go in and see exactly what San Carlos residents are, are looking for, so.
Great idea. Thank you, Millie, and I really appreciate Samtrans doing the outreach. It's very important to us all. Okay. I didn't have any speaker cards on this, but was there anybody that wanted to come up? And I'm seeing some movement, so. Come on up, Sonia.
I like to be consistent.
Maybe I can figure out how to make the timer work more accurately again.
I, thank you, great presentation. I had the fortuitous accident a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, to break my wrist. And so I can't drive and bike, and so I got to check out Samtrans and walking firsthand, which I haven't really done, and I loved, loved it. I took the ECR up and down. It was clean, it was friendly, it was, it was wonderful. And I'm so excited to talk about taking the bus more and tell my friends about taking the bus more, because it really was a fantastic way to, to bridge walking, which was also a wonderful way to get around. I went to the movies, I went to Best Buy, I went to Pet, I went all over town. But aside from that, I did have some ideas for Samtrans, and I just want to share them, because I did already submit my reimagined Samtrans, but then I had lots more imagination come up. And I don't really know how to think in the box, so I apologize, they're all out of the box. Number one goes back to legalizing speed cameras in California and using the revenue to fund buses, specifically Samtrans, and increase driver pay to draw more drivers. I know that's a huge problem. If you have to sit in a bus all day long and drive, you want to make it fun, and you need to really pay people for that impact on their health. I would suggest tickets for speeding, anything over, it's $10 per mile per hour of the speed limit, because anything five miles per hour and less doesn't get reported to insurance, you put a card on file, because driving over the speed limit gets exponentially more deadly. A pedestrian or cyclist hit by a car going 20 miles per hour has a 90% chance of survival, but a person hit by that same car going 40 miles per hour has a 20%. Every single mile per hour makes an enormous difference, and we need to take that seriously. And I think we could take that seriously and fund Samtrans at the same time. Secondly, I would make public transport free for youth, seniors, and low-income, using this extra revenue source. Thirdly, I would give buses emergency vehicle-style right-of-way status. They have sensors, all the lights go red when a bus approaches an intersection, and the only one that can go is the bus. That needs to be number one. I would make micro-mobility and other things after that, but number one has to be buses. I would also give them their own bus lane, and guess what? It already exists. It's called street parking. We have to let street parking go. We would put silos, parking silos, all over town, one mile apart, so nobody's more than a mile from this big giant parking structure. They can leave their car, they can get a shuttle, they can go back and forth. Is my time up?
Yes, it is.
Darn it, I was just getting started.
Sorry, forgot to remind people that we do have a two-minute limit.
Okay.
You can, feel free to email us, and
I will.
we will definitely pass it on to Millie.
Pleasure, thank you, thank you.
All right. Yes, sir, you can come back up, just, if you wouldn't mind, just for the record, restate your name, and we can
Perhaps this is our
amend your speaker card.
Bernie Votary. Perhaps this question's already been answered, but I wonder how Caltrain and Samtrans are going to interrelate. For example, I took the Mini Express or Mini Bullet from San Francisco to the Peninsula, and of course, it bypasses San Carlos. So I naively assumed that I would stop in Redwood City, walk over to the bus, and take the bus. Well, the next bus would be an hour going from Redwood City to San Carlos. So I think it would be very useful if these services were coordinated. Half the time, I live in San Francisco. In San Francisco, a bus will come to the bus stop every five to 10 minutes. So you are assured that you're going to get transportation. Accordingly, you get many riders, and one line may, for example, have three bus lines on it. For example, on our bus line, there's the 45, there's the 30, and the 8. So my time is up, but the point that I'm suggesting is, how is Samtrans and Caltrain going to interact?
Thank you, Bernie. Okay, yes, sir. Come on up, you can fill the speaker card out after you speak.
Well, neighbor Bernie's here in San Carlos. And I just, one thing I didn't notice on the public transit talk was Lyft and Uber. And I think for many of the people in this room, that's, that is the transit mechanism they use when they're not driving. And I think that any study nowadays that deals with how people get around should probably include that as a factor. You know, we had 30,000 riders a day or something like that. How many in that same county are taking Lyft and Uber? Thank you much.
All right, thank you very much. And I saw Millie over there taking copious notes, so I'm sure that none of this is going to get past her. All right. I don't see any other speaker cards, and if there are none, we can move on.
I had one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob, did you want to speak on item, during public comment or on this specifically?
No, I didn't.
Okay, that's next.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to general public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you're speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed, as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for a more comprehensive action or report and a formal public discussion and input at that time. So now I have two speakers. The first is Zain Galal. Is that, did I pronounce that correctly? Come on up, Zain.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. One sec, I just want to put a timer on.
There you go. I started it, but I'll, let me, let me start again for you.
There, I started.
Go ahead.
So I'm doing a petition for my ropes project, for a crosswalk to be, or crosswalk safety lights to be installed on Club Drive, on the intersection between Club Drive and Bayview, because I personally walk to school every day as a Bayview member, and people are always speeding down, and it's very unsafe concerning how many kids walk to school through that particular intersection. On multiple occasions, I've almost been hit while walking down there, which I kind of find annoying. 52% of pedestrian deaths are actually just caused on crosswalks, and normally, people don't really slow down at crosswalks, just because they're always in a rush to get to where they want to go. But safety lights installed, a 3.4% of people actually slowed down on pedestrian crosswalks, So basically, I've gone to petition, I've gone 34 signatures already, and that's in the matter of two hours. I've done it on Bayview and Clint, yes, Clinton, Drive, and it's just super unsafe, because, well, yeah, mainly people just don't slow down on it, which is very dangerous. Sometimes people even park in the middle of the crosswalk, and you'll have to navigate your way around the cars, which, that includes going off the crosswalk onto the street. And personally, I don't want to get hit by a car, it's just my personal preference. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you, Zain.
Thank you.
Next, Robert Stafford. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to, can I make a quick comment?
Oh, did you want to, yeah, go ahead.
Could I just ask staff to follow up with Zain, please, on this item? Thank you.
Sorry, Bob, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think I've followed San Carlos government for about 20 years, I like local government, and I think you're uniquely positioned with the heart of San Carlos, sort of in your history as a long-term resident, to effectuate significant paradigm shift. Again, when you look at the general plan and the execution, pretty flawless. Al Savae did a great job. But looking forward, think backwards from Pacific Hacienda, when Chris Woodman and Virginia Klassen got together to sell and develop that, the howls could be heard from towns away, it was going to ruin the character of the town. Now look at it, you barely notice it. Think today, what is Pacific Hacienda for the future? You're in a position to execute on something that's the equivalent. A few ideas are going to be going towards more of a Hong Kong model of housing, cohousing. Think of Carmelita, it was a good idea to stop the subdivisions, but probably within a quarter-mile, half-mile of transit, 4,000 square-foot lots, makes sense. We have a lot now. Looking at the vital issue of daycare, it's great that the spotlight's on it. Usually, when there's a spotlight, it generally means it gets dim. I would look towards the west side. Looking at the east side, as a panacea of goodie bags, is going to take a long time and won't deliver. But really, what you're looking at when you look at the general plan is not a redo, it's more of putting scaffolding on the sides, expanding and thinking about the paradigm shift that's coming. The generation that's with us now, they don't use resources the same way we do. Housing is going to be a big equation, and I thought Samtrans did a great job, which is who's it for? It's for everyone. It's for the people that work in restaurants, it's for the people that come to work in local businesses, and you know, it's And you know, it's interesting, I saw a quote today from a great Argentinian writer named Jorge Luis Borges, and he was asked, what is poetry? And he said, poetry is so essential. It's like the color yellow. You either see it or you don't. He was blind when he said that, but he saw everything. The question today is, who do you see? Who do you see in your community? The housing has to reflect that. Personally, staff should be doing this general plan update. I think the reason they use the consultants is they get tired of getting yelled at. I would give Savae a half million, a couple hundred grand, and let planning do it. Don't outsource it. They're great people, and I think they can do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. We are going to move on to council communications and announcements. These are announcements that really are just brief items, some members of the council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They're informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this time. So, let me go here and find out who wants to tell us something, and I see Mark's light on, so Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one item that I was going to mention, which I'll preface by saying that I hope I'm not going to jinx things by doing this, but I'm going to do it anyway because I don't believe in jinxing things, that jinxing happens. Silicon Valley Clean Water is approaching a very significant milestone. If things continue going the way they have been, on January 19th, they will have had an entire year of operation without any lost time accidents. To put that in perspective, that's never happened in like 40 years. And I don't mean to imply by that that they're a dangerous operation, because they're not. It's just, it is, there's a lot of risks involved in operating that kind of facility. So I hope to be able to report back at our next council meeting if they have achieved that, but, and if they have, I think some form of recognition or acknowledgement from the council might be in order.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. I just wanted to report out that I represent San Carlos on Peninsula Clean Energy's Board of Directors. This past weekend, we had a strategy envisioning exercise that ran the better part of the day, and I have to say that it was very informative. And the goals for that organization are very aggressive, with the idea being of getting to 100% clean energy by the year 2025 in San Mateo County. So a lot of ideas were generated there. The next step is that we'll be going to the staff at Peninsula Clean Energy for them to come back with a program plan for ratification by the board at some point, and at that point, I'll be updating people on the status of where we landed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Ron. I wanted to let members of the public know two things. The first is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, which is also known as HART, is having a second unit open house tomorrow night at the San Carlos Library from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And it's going to be a really great showcase of their free preliminary second unit designs. I think there's six different designs, and they're looking for feedback from the public. So if you're interested in learning more about ADUs, which are also called backyard cottages or granny flats, it's a great opportunity to go look at these plans and give them some feedback, because it would be great to be able to just choose a free plan and then have it expedited through your city at some point, and be able to expedite construction. So that's kind of their long-term plan with that. And I also wanted to just, I don't know if you're planning on speaking about it, Mr. Mayor, but the San Carlos Week of the Family is coming up. It kicks off this Friday with family game night, something that my family always enjoys doing. The website is sancarlowsweekofthefamily.org, and there's lots of activities that continue through next week, and I would encourage everyone to participate. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Adam?
Sure, I'm going to go a little bit, I guess, out of order. I don't really have an announcement, but I just wanted to really offer my condolences to the Fox family with the passing of longtime District, current County District Attorney, Jim Fox. I know he was an active member of the community, a friend of mine. I enjoyed many conversations with him, and a longtime San Carlos resident. I believe the service will be on the 21st at St. Charles, and he'll certainly be missed by many people in the community.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to add on to something Sarah said. She talked about the Week of the Family. Usually, these Week of the Family activities are considered by many to be sort of kid-oriented or just families, or family-oriented with people with, you know, younger children. But there is one event that's going to be held, it's called Trivia Night, it's going to be at Domenico's. I believe it's on January 24th, and it's an adult event, so.
The last time I heard, you keep winning it, so.
No, they keep bringing in ringers, and some of them have former council members involved, so you can tell, you can guess who they are. Okay. If there's nothing else, let's move on to the consent calendar. These are just items that we usually approve in one motion. Any member of the council or the public may remove one of these items by request for consideration. And do I have any requests to remove any items?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item E.
Okay. Item eight?
E is in Edgar.
Yeah, eight E.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Eight. I forgot it was eight on the agenda.
Okay. Any others? Okay, I think we need a motion to remove, or to just make a motion without eight E?
I move to approve consent calendar items A through D and F through G.
Second?
And there's a motion and a second. Do we do this by voice vote?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. I'm wondering, since this is not an excessively long agenda, maybe we just handle eight E right now?
And for my part, my thing is very brief, so that would work well with that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you wanted to read what the item was.
Let me hang on a minute. Let me go. So this is on quarterly reports and city commissions and board. Who is, who is going to make that to us? Hang on.
Actually, for my purposes, I don't need a staff presentation on it. I just had a comment I wanted to make and a question I had, which staff could answer, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
The comment was, I just wanted to thank both staff and all of the commissions who put the reports together to share the information with us. It's the first time, I think, we've done that under our new protocol, and it was very helpful. I will personally say I was very impressed with quite a number of the ideas that were surfaced in the strategic planning thinking of a number of the commissions. I know they didn't all have an opportunity to do that for various reasons. And that actually relates to my question, which is, because I thought a number of the ideas were definitely something worth pursuing, what's the trajectory for doing that?
Well, it tends to be two different trajectories, depending on the idea. Some things, as you read through, kind of fall into more the staff purview in terms of those, and we look at them and incorporate them, just kind of like we do with the council on lower-level issues. The higher-level things, I think the purpose of the mini-retreat was to provide that information to the council, so it could inform the council's thinking as you do your own strategic planning and your own budget planning and all the other, you know, high-level strategic discussions that the council has, so that if those ideas rise up to the top with the other ideas they compete against, that you would prioritize those, and then we'd begin to work on them.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, Jeff, that if there were, let's say, specific ideas that I thought we ought to be considering, I should bring those up at the strategic planning mini-retreat at the end of this month?
That's correct.
Okay. But that'll work fine for me. Because as I said, I thought there were a number of really interesting ideas there that I'd at least like to see some time spent on, some study time spent on.
Can I, I want to echo Mark's comments, actually, if you don't mind. And I wanted to thank the commissioners who took time to work on those reports. I read them all, and I thought that it was really, really valuable and definitely helped inform my thinking, which is, one of the jobs of the commissioners is to kind of feed information to us. So I felt that those reports were really valuable, and I wanted to thank everyone for the time spent on those.
Okay. And I'd like to echo those sentiments myself. A long time ago, when I was on the Planning Commission, we had a joint meeting with the council, and it was a wonderful exchange of ideas, and this is, I think, is a very efficient way to do it. So my thanks to everybody who serves on a commission in this town, not only for serving on the commission, but giving us your input. Okay, I think we, well, I don't want to be remiss. Anybody who wants to make a comment on this, any member of the public? Otherwise, seeing none, I think we need a motion to approve this item as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of item eight E.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Crystal?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Moving on, the next item is agenda setting. These are items that we are brought up from time to time, and we want to, some members of the council or others may want to consider putting these on a future agenda. And the item we have now, eight A, is a consideration of agendizing and discussion on adopting Middlebury, Vermont as a sister city. Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since I'm the author of this one, may I take a minute to?
Absolutely. I was going to ask you if you'd like to do that.
I'm not actually absolutely sure that we need to necessarily have a council action on this, but I honestly don't know that we don't need that either, because I've never seen this process transpire. The roots of this are that I was contacted by a San Carlos resident who is attending university in Middlebury, Vermont, who apparently has been there for a number of years, and is keenly interested, along with a friend of theirs who grew up in, as I understand, at Middlebury, Vermont, in establishing this relationship. And they approached me and said, you know, asked basically, how would this happen? And I said, I have no idea, so I'll, you know, bring it forward to the council to see whether it's something the council should do, or whether it's something the council can get staff direction to work on. After doing that, I learned through correspondence with Tom Davids, who I see in the audience, that at some point in the past, there was an effort to do this once before, specifically involving Middlebury, as I recall. So that's kind of the context and background of this. If we were to put it on the agenda, it would be to have a discussion about whether we wish to direct staff to take what steps to do this.
Any thoughts or feedback from my fellow council members?
Just one question, because I had talked to Jeff about this, and I understood there might be a sister city panel, organization, group that has existed in the past or may still exist in some form, you know, within the city as well. So I'm just wondering if that might be a better first place to start, and then get some recommendations from them through that process, if that organization exists.
I certainly have no objection to that. I guess the part of this is driven by me still feeling my way with this new, not so new anymore, but still new, agenda-setting process of, I'm not sure, perhaps Greg can opine on this, could, you know, based on what Adam said, could the council tonight give direction to staff to work on that? Or do we need to have it come back before the council to tell the staff to do that? That's what I'm unclear about.
I think that particular question, I mean, certainly staff could talk if Sister City Association still exists and find that out, but you still have the threshold question whether you want it to come back now, or you want to bring this item under agenda-setting next time with a report about that issue. So we want you to know the process, in other words.
Go ahead.
I have a suggestion. We have a strategic planning retreat coming up. Would this be a topic that might fall under that, just because I know that there's an array of issues that we'll be discussing?
First, again, I have no objection to that. Personally, actually, I guess I sort of saw this as a relatively lower-level type of thing than the strategic planning type.
I'd agree with that. I don't think I'd want to see that, the strategic planning. I think we've got some bigger items we want to cover on that. I mean, but at the same time, I'm happy to have it come back to, if we have to have it come back to direct staff to talk to Sister City Association, that's a pretty quick process, and I would be in favor of doing that unless we can bypass that and have them go to Sister City first and then come back to us.
Since I have complicated this enormously, Greg, would it be acceptable if we interpreted what I had put here as, if the council votes to approve putting this in the agenda, it would be to have staff come back with a report from having talked to the Sister Cities organization to?
That would be, we could agendize that kind of report after we talk, sure. That would be appropriate for here.
Then that's the revised context for my suggestion.
I'd be happy to support that.
Before we go any further, Greg, I want to ask, since I believe Tom Davids, who is here tonight, was heavily involved in the Sister City Association in San Carlos, if maybe he could just come up and give us a bit of perspective on it and give us a status? Would you feel comfortable with that, Tom? Former Mayor Davids?
Just for the record, I mean, this is information from a member of the public on this, but we're not really, because of the nature of this agenda item, we're not going to discuss the concept of the Sister City.
We'll just consider this a public comment?
Yeah, public comment on the item, yes.
All right. Thank you. Come on up, Tom.
Well, good evening, council members. There's a long history behind this. The Sister City Committee, as we know it now, still operates. We just finished having a meeting this evening. And we have one very active city in the process, and that's former Japan, where we have students coming back and forth every year and exchanging one community with the other. So this opportunity is something we've always kind of looked with favor on, just never found the right match. Having something, not locally so much, but in the same country, without having to fly to Japan or Italy or wherever, could be a great opportunity for us to highlight our city with another area of the country, and also be involved with other issues on other platforms. So we would like to go ahead and work with this and see if something could come together. The idea of having someone who really wants to see it happen at the other location is a very strong reason to make a move on it, if we can work with that individual or whoever is coming from, let's see, we're looking at Waterbury. If there's Waterbury interest in our town that can translate that to, with a real Waterbury on the East Coast, it'd make it easier to come together. So we're ready to move into it and work further on it if you'd like to see it done.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. You did it under two minutes, too. Okay, so I wasn't aware that Sister City organization was still active, and I'm glad to hear it is. Alternatively, from having an agenda item on this, is this something we could just have staff talk to Tom a little bit on, and, you know, they may be able to do a lot of the legwork on this?
Yes, exactly. Unfortunately, you can't provide us that direction tonight under this item, because this is just the whether or not to agendize it item. So that really is simply all we're looking for, is direction from council. But it's a two-step process now, and so step one is put it on your agenda, and step two is say exactly that.
All right. Well, in that case, my only concern is we do have a lot on our plate, and it's something that I think is a good idea. I think it's not something I don't want to do, it's something I think we should probably, you know, agendize for at some point in the future. Maybe there is a, sometime in the spring where this could maybe be put on the agenda? I mean, what I, personally, what I'd like to get through, I'd like to get through the, you know, strategic planning and kind of get a handle on, you know, what we have ahead of us and how much work staff has to do and that sort of thing.
We'd be happy to program it into an upcoming agenda based on agenda workload, recognizing that this isn't a urgent issue.
Right. Can I, I know we're going to agendize this now potentially, can we just put it on the consent calendar? And just do it that way, and it doesn't take a lot of time just to give that direction in the short term?
Don't see a problem with that.
Yeah. Anybody else, everybody else okay with that? Okay. All right. I think that's a done deal. Okay, all right, I think that's a done deal. Okay, moving on to new business. This is a consideration of adopting a resolution. Oh, did I miss something? Oh, do we need an emotion or just general agreement?
The Vice Mayor is correct, we actually do need...
We need a motion, I apologize.
I'll move that we...
I'm rusty.
I'll move we add item 9A to a future agenda. I think Adam said potentially as a consent calendar item, subject to workload.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second, any other discussion? Okay, Crystal?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes, and my thanks to Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan for keeping me on the straight and narrow here. Okay, so now on to new business. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the existing general fund balance reserve allocations and the transfer of $3 million from the facility and infrastructure reserve to the newly created public safety and wildfire mitigation reserve. Rebecca?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the consideration of a resolution to approve the general fund reserve allocations and the transfer of $3 million into a newly created public safety and wildfire mitigation reserve. At the end of November last year, the council adopted the audited financial statements, otherwise known as the comprehensive annual financial report, or the CAFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. As shown in the table here, fiscal year 2019 was another good year, and as a result, our net change in fund balance or surplus was close to $9 million. Total revenues exceeded budget by 5 million or 11.8% as compared to an increase of 4.6 million or 10.9% of total revenue in the prior year. Total expenses were under budget by 6.4 million or 14.2% as compared to an increase of 1 million or 2.8% from the prior year. The schedule reflects the significant changes in each revenue type. Our two biggest revenue sources, property and sales tax, represent a majority of the increase over budget. Property taxes exceeded budget by 2.1 million or 18.2% as compared to an increase of 1.7 million or 14.3% from the prior year. The primary reason for this increase is the addition of new development to our assessment roles, transfers of ownership, and the sales of properties throughout the city. This was coupled with larger pass-through payments and residual amounts from the redevelopment property tax trust fund distributions. Sales taxes exceeded budget by 900,000 or 8.5% as compared to 100,000 or 1.2% from the prior year. The primary reason for this increase is the stable economic growth in revenues from restaurants and hotels, food and drugs, fuel and service stations, autos and transportation groups, and large building construction facilities. Current charges for services revenue was less than budget by 600,000 or 12.3% as compared to a decrease of 100,000 or 2.4% from the prior year. Included in this category are plan check revenues from large developments. The timing of these projects can vary from year to year depending on the size and timeline of each development. License and permit revenue exceeded budget by 500,000 or 26.7% as compared to a decrease of 300,000 or 11.3% from the prior year. Similar to current charges for services, this revenue can fluctuate from year to year depending on the timing of the construction projects. Transient occupancy tax, or TOT, revenues exceeded budget by 500,000 or 20.3% as compared to an increase of 1.5 million or 88.6% from the prior year. The primary reason for this increase is the opening of the Marriott Residence Inn and the passage of Measure QQ in November of 2018. Measure QQ increased the TOT rate from 10% to 12% effective January 1, 2019, so the fiscal year includes six months of revenues at the higher tax rate. Use of money and property revenues were higher than budget by 800,000 as compared to an increase of 1.5 million from the prior year. This increase is primarily related to an increase in interest rates and a more favorable fair value adjustment, as well as the timing of the installment of the digital billboard. And finally, vehicle and leave revenues exceeded budget by 300,000 or 8% as compared to an increase of 400,000 from the prior year. Vehicle and leave revenues are directly tied to the property assessments, so any increase in property values will also increase this line item. This chart shows the change in operating expenditures. Salaries and benefits, including the public safety legacy obligations, were under budget by 2.1 million or 12.3% as compared to an increase of 700,000 or 5.24 from the prior year. The decrease from budget is the result of salary and benefit savings that are realized from vacant or underfilled positions during the fiscal year, and the recognized reduction in pension payments to CalPERS following the one-time paydown of 5 million in April of 2018. Operating expenses were under budget by 3.7 million or 13.5% as compared to an increase of 300,000 or 1.3% from the prior year. The budget savings were realized as a result in the start and completion of certain projects and major developments and cost savings from fuel and contracted public safety and legal So per Resolution 2011-40, the city manager is authorized to assign reserve amounts for a specific purpose. As done in prior years, after the audit is complete, staff reviews the prior year savings and recommends transfers into these reserves. A summary of the changes in fund balance and reserves is shown here. The reserve assignments were allocated as follows. An increase to the economic uncertainty reserve by approximately 400,000 to bring the total reserve balance to 17% of operating expense or closer to the 20% goal that's been set by council. An increase to the unfunded liabilities reserve of 5.3 million to help offset the future costs of pensions and changes in actuarial assumptions by CalPERS. And an increase to the general facility and infrastructure reserve of 6 million to help offset the costs of unfunded projects. These reserve assignments were offset by council-approved transactions that occurred during the fiscal year, resulting in an unassigned fund balance of 2.8 million. Although the audit is complete, the council can direct staff to reallocate the general fund reserve balances at any time. It's recommended that the council transfer 3 million from the facility and infrastructure reserve into the newly created public safety wildfire mitigation reserve. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. I'm going to try to get, maintain Mark's pattern of asking for public comment before we get to council questions, but I don't have any speaker cards so far. Would anyone like to speak on this before we get into questions? Seeing none? Oh, I apologize, I looked away, I didn't see your hand up, so if you'd like to come up.
As you're probably aware, San Carlos is one of the highest-risk areas for fires, so it's very appropriate that funds be assigned to that. I had a house in paradise which burned down, and as you're all aware, the failure to provide exit and entry into the city, as is being proposed in the Black Mountain, in which there will be only one exit from that property, is not consistent with what the state is currently recommending for high-risk areas like we have. In the past, we had the fire department that would go from home to home, reminding homeowners clearing shrubbery and not having shingle roof, et cetera, take measures to reduce the risk of fire. Of course, that's no longer occurring, we don't have the fire department going around. It's certainly easy now, from the standpoint of Google does it, you can look around the city and you can see where you have overgrowth of areas that need to be addressed. So hopefully, the city will take measures to increase public awareness, provide feedback to homeowners to reduce the risk, and also to address the extremely irresponsible planning for Black Mountain, which consists of only one exit from the property. If a fire should break out at the exit that goes into Alameda de las Polgas, all those people could perish. It could be easily connected on the west side to existing exit into the area at Highland Park, and for some inexplicable reason, this has not been addressed. So any measures that you're now taking to address the issue of wildfires are extremely timely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Viteri. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up, Sonia.
I just prompted a quick question. Is that, is exit always involve cars? Is that considered the only way to exit a property, is it has to be a vehicle? Or can it be a mountain bike trail or hiking tra, I mean, is there, is that a, who can answer that?
Well, I believe in this instance, he's referring to a vehicle exit, yes.
And is that the law, that it has to be a vehicle? You couldn't go out on foot?
I don't believe he was citing a law, I think he was citing California has a desire to make sure that communities have multiple exits in the event of wildfire or other natural disasters.
Okay, but so example, if there were charged mountain bikes and paths to exit, maybe that would be a way to think about other ways to exit a area? I would just suggest maybe cars aren't the only way to get out.
Thank you.
Public buses also.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, well, I don't see anybody who has any questions.
I have a question.
Now I do. Adam, go ahead.
So Rebecca, can you just, I want to just follow up on the public comment that was made. So we've done over the last year, oh, sorry. This, so if we were to transfer this 3 million over, this would be additive to the work we're already doing or have done in the past year around, fire safety and wildfire mitigation. Can you tell me, like, because we've done the clearing at the parks, we've had, the fire department has done evacuation drill, we've had a couple of public town halls around fire safety, sent flyers out and stuff like that, so this would all be additive to that potentially? And it doesn't mean that we're not going to, that, I don't remember the number that we spent on the, those items in the past year. This would not affect that funding, this would sort of be in addition to the items we've done already.
This would be in addition to.
And I guess, question, the other question I had, you know, we've, in terms of public safety, and I wonder how this fits into this, we've talked, had discussions previously about road quality for our, in the community that sort of were at the bottom third of the county in terms of road quality. Could that be something that could be seen as a public safety issue, or is that sort of need to be dealt with separately?
Well, I probably wouldn't classify it that way, just for transparency in terms of how the public's understanding of what it is we're doing, but certainly, what we're doing here tonight is simply earmarking and parking money. This isn't an actual expenditure plan, so, you know, come budget time, or any other time for that matter, that the council's talking about an item that has a financial impact. Any of these monies, despite how you earmark them at any one time, can be redeployed by the council for other purposes. So this is just sort of a snapshot in time of where your parking money, but not the plan to spend it yet, which would come at budget time or through a specific agenda item.
So I guess if, certainly in favor of putting more funding towards wildfire, but I also would prefer to take some of that funding potentially and put it towards a roads budget now and park it to where the roads are, and even if we were to take 2 million for wildfire and 1 million for roads, we've talked about the quality of the roads in the city are not up to enough, and we have a goal as a council to try to get up to the midpoint in the county. So, I mean, my thought would be to take 2 million to the fire and wildfire safety and public safety, and maybe take a million towards roads to kind of do that. I know this is sort of a longer process to get the roads up and running, but at least getting some of that funding started there would, I think, would be a good step.
Okay. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins, and thank you, Rebecca, for the presentation. So a couple, I have a number of questions, I'll just start off with a couple, because I'm sure everybody has some, but can you help me understand how the $3 million was determined? Why that particular number? Do we know? What drove that?
Because we just kind of estimated that $3 million over the next several years was a likely expenditure amount based on our spending over the last couple.
Okay, thank you. So one of the questions that came up to me is, there's a kind of understanding in the community that San Carlos, the city of San Carlos, has a budget surplus at the same time that our schools are facing a really hard time in terms of the fact that there's lower enrollment, there's a measure on the ballot to extend the bond measure for the parcel tax. And what I'd like to better understand is, help, maybe Jeff, this is for you, to help me understand kind of, you know, where the opportunity is with the surplus? Is it truly a surplus? Because I also know in the budget, we have a number of unfunded projects, and there's a prioritization process that needs to happen, but I would love to get your thoughts on kind of this issue that we're also facing, the local schools, that we all benefit from higher property taxes since it's a desirable place to live, so.
So the surplus in front of us tonight is a real surplus in terms of dollar amounts. It comes out of an accounting as opposed to a budgeting process. So at our close of year-end, we had additional monies. It doesn't in any way speak to the existing needs that have already been identified by the city. The very long list of unfunded projects, council's desire to, that has already been expressed, and we expect to see sort of be formalized in our strategic planning process around additional citywide planning, long-term planning initiatives. Issues, as Councilmember Rack just brought up, that the council talked about a few weeks ago, about making additional investments above and beyond our typical gas tax allocation for streets and roadways and traffic improvement, as well as our unfunded obligations around retiree medical benefits from the past and retirement benefits and whatnot. So the, from a macro perspective, the surplus doesn't come anywhere near, you know, it's like an order of magnitude of probably several hundred short of meeting our overall needs. But in the interim, you know, what we need to do is, in the coming months, talk about how we allocate that towards the known needs, because it's not going to go far enough. And certainly, you know, all the options are on the table for the council to consider as you do that, and that's really what the budget process is designed, to have that robust discussion with the council, where we have studies, you know, multiple-day study sessions to talk about all the different issues, to get that feedback from the council on what the funding priorities are, and then build a budget for you that reflects your desires in the coming year.
Okay, Mark?
Thank you, Ron. I actually don't so much have questions as some comments, but since we're sort of into the comment discussion phase, I think it's appropriate to do that. I want to make a couple of points. First off, I would ask my colleagues to consider that a number of the questions and comments have been made by people on the dais in the last few minutes, which I think are very good ones, actually highlight the fact that what we keep, what we're confusing is assignment of reserves and budgeting. Every of the things, every one of the things we talked about is, well, you know, what about doing something with roads? What about doing something potentially to help schools? All of which are legitimate discussions, they are all budgetary discussions, because the budget process fundamentally is balancing how much money you have access to with all the things you want to do. And you never have enough money to do all the things you want to do, and that's the hard part about budgeting, is to figure out which pieces you're going to do when. And that's actually totally separate from assigning of reserves, which Jeff actually touched on a little bit here, and I want to draw people's attention to, is whatever assignment we make tonight, we could next week decide, oh, you know what, actually, it turns out we came up with a really good idea for improving wildfire safety, and it's going to cost $4 million. Well, guess what? We can do that, because we happen to have $4 million. It's more than 3 million that we put in the reserve fund, but we have the money, because we can reallocate the money to wherever we want it to be, provided that it's not contractually committed. So what I'm leading up to is, my recommendation for the council is that we actually start doing things a little differently here. Part of the reason we have this conundrum of, gee, we have this surplus and we're talking about reserve assignments, but it's not the budget time, and we've got all these other things we said we want to talk about in the budget, is due to an artifact of the fact that because the audit has to take place after... is due to an artifact of the fact that because the audit has to take place after the fiscal year is over and we don't get the results until December, but we do the budget before the fiscal year starts, basically in April, May timeframe, we're always going to find out about surpluses and deficits asynchronously to the budget. And so what I would really recommend that we do, since the budget, the in-depth budget that we do every two years is coming up in just a few months. In fact, the budget discussions are probably going to start in like, they're already underway. Is that we just park all of this surplus into, to be assigned or unassigned, or whatever you want to call it. Knowing that when we have the budget discussions, we will figure out, okay, where do we want to actually start putting some money aside for? What, what things do we want to start putting money aside for? And that will actually, I think, simplify and make our time spent more efficient on financial issues because instead of trying to do sort of a half-assed budget process tonight when we're not really doing budgeting, and then doing the real budget process in a couple of months, we'll just do it all once. So that's my recommendation, that we actually, unless, unless there is some statutory requirement that says we can't do this, is just let all the money sit in unassigned for the next couple of months.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciated your comments, Mark, because I think what part of my struggle was not having been through a budget process yet and trying to make decisions about reserve funds now, separate from the budget process. So, you know, I don't, I don't mind, I guess I'm going to have to continue to think about Mark's comments. I was originally, I agreed with Adam. I thought that maybe putting $2 million into the wildfire reserve and then putting a million closer to infrastructure was more aligned with my thinking. And that's not because I discount the value of preparing for wildfires. I certainly do. But we had just also had the discussion about improving our roads and how important that is. And I think that it might be easier to kind of divide up the money now than put $3 million into a reserve and then take a million away later. But I don't know. I'm, I'm open to discussing Mark's, Mark's suggestion as well.
Okay. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Can I just, Councilmember Olbert, I just had a question. Are you talking about, when you, you talk about parking things, are you speaking only about the $3 million? Or are you talking about the entire surplus?
Good question. For me, I would, I would just park the entire thing. In other words, that, that, for now. I would basically say, let's make assignment of reserves part of the budget process rather than its own standalone process. Okay? Because it fundamentally, and that was what I was trying to say with all of the discussion, which was, there were good comments that people were making. We were actually doing budget thinking tonight, but it's not really the budget. And we're going to do it all over again when we come to the budget. So why don't we just do it once and, and have a discussion about not only what we want to budget, but where we want the reserves to be showing up in the budget process. It's only going to be a couple of months away.
So can I ask, and thank you for that clarification. So my question is though, on the unfunded liabilities, is there a financial benefit to the city by moving it there now or keeping it there now versus parking it and dealing with it later?
No, there's no benefit to where it's parked now that, that makes it magic. No.
So regardless of, so if you didn't take the unfunded liabilities, the 5.25 million, and didn't assign it now to make a payment to, to the state, to CalPERS on it, that would be irrelevant. At this, the timing is irrelevant to this.
If I may.
Because it's in the budget, it has to be done within the budget cycle.
Because, if I may intrude in your discussion, because what we would be doing tonight is not authorizing a payment to anybody. It's literally just, I'm oversimplifying here. Rebecca's had got $30 some odd million sitting in a bank account someplace. And she's writing on a piece of paper how the $30 million is allocated. But that's it. It's all earning the same interest. It's all doing the same thing. It's all available to do whatever we're allowed to do. And none of it's actually going to anybody because it can't until we actually have a spending action in front of us. Either a budget or a special item where we, like we did a year or so ago, where the council authorized a payment to CalPERS. That, that, that's the only time the money actually gets committed.
So that payment, but that payment could happen sooner than the budget cycle if we wanted to go.
Correct.
In that direction.
You couldn't do it tonight because it's not agendaized.
I understand, I understand. But I just meant like, we could do it at the next meeting potentially, which might have some benefit instead of waiting till later on. Okay. Thank you.
Laura?
Oh. Question, I guess. So, so Gavin Newsom in his budget for California articulated that he's interested in setting aside $50 million to address the power, PG&E power shutdown issues. So I would, I, I think that kind of in light of this discussion around setting aside reserves for public safety and wildfire mitigation, that would be an item that we would want to follow because it's specifically for communities to manage the impact of those power shutdowns. So that's just food for thought if that hasn't been made aware prior to that. And then would you mind just kind of quickly talking about, so the first slide talked about the fact that there was an $8 million surplus. We're talking about $3 million for the wildfire safety fund. Could you just quickly review top line again where the other $5 million would be placed?
There's a $5 million going into the unfunded liabilities. Yeah.
So they, okay. So I might be missing it because it just doesn't look like it lines up. Like I'm not, for example, I'm not seeing the $3 million, for example, on this slide.
It's, it's not on that slide. It would be coming out of the, the line item that says general projects for 12,000, or 12 million. Oops. I got it. There's a line item under general projects that says 12,341,000. The $3 million would come out of there and go on the line underneath it. It just hasn't been done yet, so it's not reflected on the chart. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Well, let me chime in. Adam, you made a, a good point about maybe putting some of the money toward roads and that sort of thing. When I think of this public safety and wildfire mitigation, lots of things come to mind. We, we can talk about preparedness. We can talk about cameras. We can talk about defensible space. We can talk about evacuation routes. And when it comes to evacuation routes, roads are part of that, those evacuation routes. So I think it's, it's entirely appropriate to have that money in, in a designated reserve that we're going to use for that purpose. I, it, I get a little concerned when we start saying, okay, we're going to put it all into an unassigned because you never know what will come up. Lots of things will come up. And pretty soon, we, we forget our mission and we forget what we're trying to do. We may not need anywhere near $3 million to do all the things we want to do. We're going to be working with public safety officials to tell us what they need and what needs to be done. I'm going to be having a meeting coming up where we're going to talk about, specifically about, about evacuation routes. And we're going to find out what the cost of that is. So I, I think at this point, we, you know, I think it's important, not only to what we're trying to do, but it's also important as a statement to the public that we're committed to this. I don't want to see this, this lost, and then we're going to resurrect it later. I, I realize that there's lots of other things that, that have, that are going to have their own priorities, are all important to be done. But there's no, I mean, just as there's no magic about taking all the money and putting it in an unassigned reserve, there's also no magic about having the money in this fund. We may not use it all. We may want to reassign it back to unassigned. So I, personally, I think that we, that we would do ourselves a disservice to not make a statement that we're going to at least allocate this money. It's not, not a commitment that we have to use it. But I think for now, until we do a budgeting process and we find out exactly where we need to spend that money, I still believe that we should, we should make sure that we, that we assign this money in this way at this time. Mark, you had a comment?
Yes. Thank you, Ron. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. First off, I would sort of remind folks that we actually have $38 million available for whatever it is we choose to do. That's the $34.4 million less the $400,000 that's non-spendable, roughly speaking, right? Okay. So we have $38 million available for things.
Well, that's the $2 million that was sent to the community endowment.
Well, thank you. $36 million.
This was a point in time. This was June 30.
You're right. You're right. Thank you. $36 million. I'm not going to be able to buy that G5. That's one thing to keep in mind. The other thing is, it's not like this is going to be gone forever. All we're talking about doing is doing it two months from now. We also have made some significant statements of commitment, I believe, political commitment to the community with the meeting we held last fall, where we all did a lot of brainstorming. We had a lot of community input on wildfire and public safety. And I don't, I'm not saying anybody up here does otherwise, but I don't think any of us thought that that was just, oh, we have this one meeting and then we're gone. That was a statement of commitment. The fact that we had staff reduce that to a list of actionable items that I believe they are either about to be working on or already working on or, or, yeah. So things are actually happening. So that's a even more active statement of commitment than allocating some numbers on a piece of paper. And then the last point I guess I'd make is, the other thing you have to remember, there is, I will agree with, with you, Ron, that there is a signaling value to when we, we separate out money here and say, $3 million to this. We've highlighted that in a way. We sort of reiterated, yeah, we really meant this is, this is important. One of the problems I have with doing that is that, well, then that opens the floodgate to absolutely everything that we think ought to be done, needs to be addressed tonight. You know, for example, the fact that we didn't put, we might not have money put aside in the proposal for street and roads improvement. Does that mean what we said about trying to do better on roads didn't mean anything? No, of course not. That's part of the reason why it was suggested we allocate money there. Laura made the comment, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but Laura made the comment, which I've heard from residents as well, that gee, if the city has a lot of money and the district, the school district is having all sorts of financial problems, is there something we should be doing there? Well, if we don't assign some reserves to that, does that mean that we're saying to those people, oh, well, that issue is not important to the council? Well, of course not. That's not at all the statement. So part of the value of not assigning it to specific things now and leaving it for the budget process is that's where all this stuff comes together. Assigning it tonight leaves on the table, it's like, okay, if you didn't manage to get it on this list, I guess you're not as important. It actually sends a negative message for everything else. It may send a positive message about the things that happen, have a line item associated with it, but it sends a negative message for everything that doesn't have a line item on it. And I'd like to avoid that.
Good point. However, I think this council has set a clear example over the years that we're not spend thrifts. And just because we are given a certain amount of money to spend on certain categories, we don't always spend it. I think that, as again, I think it's important that we have the category. Who says we'll spend it all? We may not. We might spend a million and we've got a bunch of money left over. We might have, people come back and say, we need four. And we may say, well, we can't do four, but we can do, you know, we can do three. I just think that it's, it's a good starting point. I don't think it commits us to anything long-term, but it gives us some room to seriously consider what those necessary measures are that we need to take to make sure that, that we keep the public safe. So I, Mark, I, I completely get what you're saying. I guess, you know, it's just a, it's a, I think it's just a point of disagreement. But you have another comment?
Well, not, not so much another comment, Ron, because I think you're right. We've, we've explained our viewpoints to each other. I was just going to suggest, and I was, this is only literally 30 seconds worth of effort, so I think I could probably come up with a longer list myself. And I'm sure the rest of the dais can as well. But if we're going to start allocating money towards specific projects in addition to the notions of public safety and wildfire, roads, I would like to see that we add to that discussions of allocating money for affordable housing, helping schools, our parks and recreational resources. I'm not sure what I call the sort of green master plan that Dave Crabbe was talking about, but that's in there too. And then lastly, I'd also like to suggest that we, we spend some time talking about whether or not we need to put aside some dollar resources to help staff try and accomplish all of this stuff that we want, we want to see done. I'm sure you, you've all had discussions like I've had with Jeff about how we are stressing the system. So, and I just offer those as suggestions that if we're going to discuss where we put money, I'd like to see those added to the list of discussion.
Well, I suppose we can add them at some point.
No, tonight, I mean, that's, I'd like to see them discussed tonight.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
If I may. So I appreciate what Councilmember Olbert's saying in terms of the, you know, the larger fund pieces. So, and after the discussion in terms of budgeting, I, I guess my sense is I would rather look at the roads and, at the budget level, since we have the opportunity to do that and we'll have the funding then to do that. So I would sort of withdraw my sort of request to look at roads as part of this. And I think we, I'm comfortable moving forward with just allocating as is recommended on staff. And as you mayor have pointed out, they'd like to just go with the wildfire fund to send that message. With the idea that we could have these other discussion items throughout the budget process and certainly would support having discussions on the, on the items that Councilmember Olbert suggested that we should look at for funding, for more funding in the future as part of the budget process.
Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. So I think from my perspective, I think where I'm leaning is we're, we're literally just a few, a few days away, literally, from the strategic planning process. And as far as kind of the road improvement, my understanding in the last, what we left it is that the Public Works Director, Stephen Machida, was going to come back to us with kind of some different options in terms of what level we were, wanted to get at. I don't know that we actually set a target. I think we talked generally about that. I think that there's a whole host of issues that is facing our community. So I think my recommendation would be that we have this conversation in context of some of those other broader initiatives with a, you know, a strong recommendation that we think about setting money aside for wildfire mitigation because there's a whole host of things that fall underneath that. So, for example, I've recommended to you in one of our sessions that we think about creating a climate change strategy. And I think there's a number of initiatives that fall under that that are actually broad, broadly speaking. I don't know if the title of public safety and wildfire mitigation addresses the scope with which some of the inputs we've received tonight. I don't know if it fully captures all of that. Because I think climate change impacts a lot of different aspects and wildfire risk is one of them.
Okay. Well, we, a lot of great ideas. However, we have, we have a, you know, a pretty specific new business item that we have to address. So if there's, if there's no more comments, I'll entertain a motion either way.
Actually, through the chair, if I may ask Greg a question. It was sparked by, by the mayor's last comment. So given the way the agenda item is written, can, for example, the, the action here be amended to include allocating reserves for work on roads, supporting schools, parks? Or are we constrained from doing that because of the way it's written?
I think the, the constraint is in the, the reserve allocation authority that, that's in the agenda item. So I think my understanding, Jeff can correct me or Rebecca can correct me, is this is not really budgeting and figuring out how to spend money. It's the reserve allegations. And some of the things you're talking about might be included and I'm just using this as an example, general projects or some other facilities, infrastructure reserves. I think you're, it seems to me you're limited to the allocations in the, in the reserve assignments as opposed to adding a whole bunch of new categories.
And if, if I can maybe expand on that a little bit and maybe slightly challenge it, but I think maybe you're saying what I'm thinking, is the council has the ability to assign the money to any existing reserves, but the only new reserve that you could create tonight that has its own new name, it would be the public safety wildfire mitigation reserve. Because what, what I have the authority to do is park money in your existing accounts, which is what I've done. But what I can't do, and only the council can do, is create a new reserve fund, which is that particular item. But, you know, like, like the facility infrastructure reserve is a very generic category for the council that money flows into this time of year and then flows out of when we do the capital budget. So like a lot of the things you've talked about tonight, not all of them, but a lot of them. of them, that would, that's always been a funding source and will continue to be a funding source in the future.
I think Jeff and I are saying the same thing. He just said it probably more in budget speak than I could do.
So if, let me just make sure, so my takeaway from that was that we cannot tonight create new line items. Okay. I have a comment I will make upon that during staff, during reflections and comments at the end, but, okay, thank you. That's a good answer, clear answer.
Laura?
Okay, so I think, I'm wondering if maybe this is somewhat an issue of semantics, and we're kind of going in circles around this. So, public safety to me seems like a very broad category. So I'm going to give this one last shot. So Jeff, could you kind of state for the record, from your perspective, what you see as encompassing under public safety?
Well, we purposely wrote it that way because we recognize that the council has had a lot of public safety interests, from downtown foot patrol enforcement, to additional traffic enforcement, to additional crossing guards. There's, you know, and I could probably go on and on and on. There's, in the last year, we've had many discussions related to public safety enhancements that the council's been interested in, and obviously, we believe that the council will want to continue to fund those priorities, and has expressed other interests as well. And then towards the end of last year, we had, you know, some robust discussions specific to wildfire mitigation, which has a whole, you know, host of possible expenditures moving forward that the council's interested in exploring. So, you know, this idea really came from a reflection of interest that the council has expressed in the subject over the last year. You know, in terms of my thinking on, you know, why did I sign, why did I think it was a good idea to sign money to the unfunded liability was because we spent that reserve down. And typically in the past, when we've done that, the councils wanted to restore that. And then the facility infrastructure reserve was just sort of a very general recognition that there's a whole host, including streets and sidewalks and all kinds of stuff that's been talked about, even just in tonight's meeting, that the council's going to have an interest in funding in the future. And that's one of the sources of funding that we have always drawn on, and you'll continue to draw on in the future. It's really just, I mean, we're just talking about a philosophy of how we're assigning things. You know, at the end of the day, the rubber really meets the road when you expend it, and when you get to that point, this conversation will actually not have a lot of value. You know, there's nothing wrong with anybody's point of view in terms of how you've expressed this tonight. It's really just an accounting philosophy.
Mark? Oh, wait a second.
Let me ask if this might be a compromise as part of this. I would be willing to look at not transferring the funds to the new reserve. I don't want to touch the unfunded liabilities or the economic uncertainty, but given that we've talked about other priorities that we have to have to keep that 3 million in the general projects fund as an alternative to that, as long as we didn't touch the unfunded liabilities and the economic uncertainty. I don't know, Councilmember Olbert, if that's something that, because we just would not take action then, presumably, correct?
Exactly. That's essentially what you're talking about, is we don't need to take action.
Not taking action tonight on this, given that we're going to be doing budget and other stuff, and take that 3 million, and then we can talk about discussions during the budget process. I'd throw that to you, Councilman Olbert, since you've brought up the idea of, originally of not putting some of those funds there.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, I mean, in the interest of not spending another hour on this, I would be, I'd certainly be supportive of your approach if it ends up prevailing, I think is the right word. What I wanted to say, actually, before you mentioned this, which is why I asked for a little bit of time, is however this works out tonight, I want to share a very brief story with my colleagues that comes from my early days on the San Carlos School District Board, when we also were dealing with reserves. This was back at a time when the district actually had some reserves. I don't mean to imply that they're mismanaging their funds, they just have a lot of economic challenges right now, and their tax revenues are a lot less fluid than ours are. There was a fund that this district, I think it still exists, it was called Fund 25, and it was set up in the late 90s when there was, again, some district surpluses around. And I remember joining the board, and we were going through our first budget process, and I asked, well, what's Fund 25? And I wasn't able to get a clear answer to it. I learned later that Fund 25 was set up because at the time when the district had the surpluses, they didn't want the staff of the district to know that there was more money available, and therefore they could press harder at the negotiating table for compensation negotiation. It actually had that effect. The local unions, for some reason, missed that. They didn't, they, they too asked what Fund 25 was, and they were given some answer, and they said, oh, okay, fine, we accept that. But here's the interesting part of the story. That was about seven or eight years in the past when I was raising the questions, when I was on the board. And by that time, because of turnover in the board, the board itself had forgotten what Fund 25 was for. And the board itself was like, looking at other situations where they're like, gee, I wish we had some money available. And they're like, well, we don't, because it's all in Fund 25. Okay? So whatever we do tonight, however we end up with the reserves, please remember that just like everything we do is temporary, until we actually commit to make spending, all we're talking about tonight is simply a way of indicating an expression of interest. It means nothing more than that. If, if two months from now, it ends up that we need $5 million to do what we need to do to protect the town from wildfires, let's not go, gee, I'm sorry, we're only going to be able to do 3 million of that. Okay? We can do 5, okay, as long as we have the money. Or if it turns out that something else legitimately comes up, and we really need to spend the money on it, we can go, oh, okay, we're going to spend the money on that instead. So that's the story I wanted to share.
All right, so we're either going to have a motion to table or a motion on the resolution.
I move to table, item 10A.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All right, I will just say before we vote that I think that this is something that we need to do. I don't, I hope we don't regret this. I think the public has an expectation of us to act in the public interest. Our first duty is public safety, and when budget, the budget discussions come up, I hope we have a very robust and committed discussion about it. All right, Crystal?
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
No. Okay, well, we're going to move on to item 11. This is, any other council communications and/or announcements? That would be reflections on agenda setting. And Mark, you can start off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had two items. One is of constructive criticism for staff, which is going forward for things like reserve discussions, like we were just having. I would strongly prefer that we, the council, be accorded the flexibility of exercising its authority to create new line items, okay? In a sense, what ended up happening is, and I know you were making a good faith effort with it, and I don't actually disagree with, you know, the item you added, but staff made that suggestion, and then the council was unable to change it. And I don't care for that, because we're the ones who, it's, we're in charge of seeing where the money goes, okay? And the other thing related to that is, I do hope that when we have our budget process, we will incorporate a discussion of reserves. In fact, I think we do, but it's sort of at the tail end. But anyway, I hope we have a good discussion of where we want to see the reserves assigned.
Anybody else? Any staff comments on city administrative business? All right, nothing else. Well, we are adjourned.